Good evening. Today is February 19th, 2018. I assume you all are here for the raffle that we'll be doing later? All right, maybe not. We are glad that you have chosen to be with us tonight. It is our honor and we hope that you find your time with us to be profitable. And so, as is our tradition and the tradition of thousands of communities and elected bodies across the nation, we start with a couple of things. We have the Pledge of Allegiance, but we also have a prayer. And this prayer is called a solemnizing prayer. And this prayer is for the commissioners because we need all the help that we can get as we focus our time and try to make good decisions for this community. So if commissioners, if you'd stand and join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we come to you tonight in behalf of our county commissioners who have been trusted by the citizens of Rowan County to do what's best for Rowan County. We pray, Father, that you would give them the wisdom they need tonight to make the right decision. Each thing tonight that's brought before their attention tonight will be examined thoroughly, Lord, and they'll make the right decision, what is best for Rowan County. We thank for the privilege to be here tonight. We thank for each person that's gathered here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chaplain Taylor. Always good to have you here. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. The only thing that I have to add is we're going to add a closed session. We'll make that item 6A. That'll be for attorney-client privilege. It'll be item 6A. Do we have any other additions or deletions from the agenda? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have the minutes that were provided for us for the February 5th, 2018 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We also have the consent agenda. Items A through P that were provided for us. Do we have a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, do we have anyone for public comment?
Yes.
All right, we have Kathy Sekler. Is Kathy here? Okay, Ms. Kathy. Uh-huh. Ms. Sekler, thank you for being with us tonight.
This is the first commission meeting I have ever been to, so you'll have to bear with me. I'm here to request that the property on Shin Farm Road be left agricultural. I remember when the road was dirt. I remember when the drag strip moved in. I remember when all that land that you have shops on and Perdula on was farmland. We cannot even go outside and enjoy our country anymore because of all the drag strip and cars and the beeping of the trucks up at Perdula, plus all the other noise that they make. And I think there's a lot of us in the community that would appreciate it to be left agricultural. Also, we've already got one neighbor to sign the property. House's got assigned for sale in it. My neighbor, who lives right across from the property, is looking. So please, leave it as it is.
I can tell you, my family, and I'm sorry if I get emotional, has owned that farmland for over 100 years. My family is one of the founding families of the southern part of Rowan County. And I can tell you in just my lifetime, and I am not that old, I can tell you a difference between how the road used to be growing up and how it is now. I have a five-year-old son, sorry, he just turned six, who, he can't even play in the front yard because we have trucks that run up and down our road, and we have motorcycle shops and other shops that test their cars. My house is right there on a speedway or a straightway that they just decide to speed. And when you have animals, and we used to let our dogs run free, all of my neighbors did growing up, but when you are scared for your kids and for your own animals, it makes a difference in how you feel on that land. A land that you've been on for over 100 years in Rowan County. So thank you.
Could you give us your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm Jennifer Nicholson. I'm her daughter.
What's your address?
My address, I am 725 Shin Farm Road.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman, there's going to be a public hearing for this if they can speak again.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. That's all we had for signed up for public comment. All right, Mr. Muir. All right, so this is public hearing for Z-01-18 Cash Properties. I have a speech that I'm required to read. The public hearing for consideration of Z-01-18 is now in session. The hearing will focus on an application submitted by the property owner, Cash Properties, for changing the zoning designation on tax parcel 230-064 from RA to IND. The property is located at the 1,000 block of Shin Farm Road. The public hearing will be conducted in the following format. A planning staff member will present the application and provide the planning board's recommendation for the case. The property owner applicant may offer any comments regarding the case and any citizens interested in providing comments relative to the case for consideration by the Board of Commissioners. Once the public hearing has been closed, the board will discuss the case and vote on the recommendation. During this deliberation period, no additional public comment may be received. The decision made by this board will be one of the following. One, will grant the rezoning as requested or modified. Two, continue the request. Three, refer the application with modifications back to the planning board for further study or consideration. Or four, deny the zoning request. Prior to opening the public hearing, are there any questions from the board members or citizens in attendance regarding this process? The public hearing is now in session, and Ed Muir will present the application for consideration. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. As the chairman indicated in his opening remarks, this is the first rezoning request of 2018. It's from Cash Properties that seeks the rezoning of tax parcel 230-064. It's 12.69 acres on Shin Farm Road. The request is to transition from rural agriculture to industrial zoning. Just a general orientation of where this is, it's in the southwest corner of Rowan County. See here China Grove, Landis, and Conapolis along the 2985 corridor here. Traveling west along NC-152 and then south off of Shin Farm Road and about the 1,000 block is the site we will be discussing tonight. Prior to countywide zoning in 1998 and during its formative years, these three subdivisions, the Goshin, Ayers, Performance Park, and Gateway Park, have provided automotive, service-related, manufacturing operations. This particular tract included with it was part of the initial countywide industrial district in this particular area. Then in 1999, we picked up another five acres fronting on Shin Farm Road. And then more recently, in 2006, adjoining Pitt Road, there's a couple acres there that were picked up for industrial zoning. This constitutes about an 86-acre industrial district in this area of the county, and this is our site relative to the request. As is our standard format, we look at four different zoning criteria per the zoning ordinance. We start off with our plans and policies, and in this case, it's the West Rowan Land Use Plan that is applicable. You'll notice here that the site is located in Area 3 of the Western Rowan Land Use Plan. It's also located in what is identified as a commerce and industrial node. However, there are no specific or general recommendations for that particular node. So it could perhaps be inferred that since it's not located on a US or 29, on the US or 2970 corridor, that these locations can be encouraged at commercial nodes. So the second item we look at is the consistency and compatibility. And this is generally included in the zoning text, but industrial zoning involves the extraction, manufacturing, processing, assembling, storage, and distribution of products. The request is somewhat consistent with this in that it would join the surrounding 85-acre industrial district, and also it coincides with the future land use concepts that we saw in the plans and policies section just previously. Industrial zoning is typically applied in areas with maximum accessibility to major highways, rail lines, and other significant transportation systems. In this case, the request may be consistent with this as well because the locational standard can be achieved as part of the larger industrial district. Continuing with compatibility of uses, this table depicts the difference, or is really a comparison, of the RA and industrial uses in our zoning ordinance. On the left are the major use categories in the zoning ordinance. Under the RA and industrial columns, you'll see that there are uses that are identified as permitted, those with special requirements, and those with conditional uses. Most notably, in the industrial district, the Rowan County zoning ordinance does not allow residential uses. In the RA district, mining activities are not allowed. Wholesale trade are not allowed in the RA district, and finance services are not allowed in the industrial. Again, these are a generalized grouping of the hundreds of uses that we have in our ordinance. I would tend to say as a rule of thumb that any use that we consider a heavy impact, more of the noxious uses, would be considered as conditional uses in the industrial district. So when we have, just as an example here, maybe in wholesale trade, there might be some particular use that still is a conditional use, but out of 35 uses in wholesale trade, when I looked at, I generally said that those uses are permitted. The thing to remember about conditional uses, for those of you that have been on the planning board, and this board for a while will know, those uses come back to this board. If this rezoning is approved tonight, it does not allow those conditional uses by right. Those applications would still come back before this board for a public hearing and consideration, although they would not go through the planning board. It comes directly to this board. Chairman, you have a question? So transitioning to the vicinity conditions, this is, I believe, a 2017 aerial image. This is the site that we saw earlier. This is the Gateway Park that fronts on Wilkinson Road, the tract in between, Performance Park here, and the Goshin-Ayers subdivision. And this is the site that we're talking about right here, Cash Properties. Generally speaking, and we'll see this on the rezoning map a little bit later on, the area to the north and to the east of this site are all zoned industrial. A southern perspective, again, this is the property that we're talking about here. Ms. Sekler spoke earlier. Her daughter was with her. Residential uses are not prominent in this area, but they are, they are there. They do exist. In this particular case, there's some right across the street from the site here, here. You can pick them up on the aerial. They made reference to the site that's immediately south of that. I think that particular lot is for sale. But then there's a larger 200-and-some acre tract that continues here and goes toward the east that's in the farming or the land use deferral program that I believe makes it almost over to Wilkinson Road. Here's the zoning map that I referred to. You see that there's a lot of RA in this area, but here's the site that's under consideration tonight. It's this 12-and-a-half acre site that touches the industrial district. This is Wilkinson Road, the Mooresville Motorsports Park here, zoned industrial, a lot of automotive race-related businesses, and then the Mooresville Drag Strip here in this particular area. Although this is the first of the year, we've done this many times, this board has. So we conduct a public hearing, staff finishes up their report, the applicant, Mr. Callaway, is here. He can provide any background or additional comments that he wants, or you may ask of him. Then we give the public the opportunity to comment, provide any observations they have. If you want, staff can come back and answer any questions that you may have. Then you close the hearing, and then we go through the consistency and reasonableness phase of the meeting, and then you vote on the request. The planning board did conduct a courtesy hearing on this particular request, and it's generally favorable. The consistency statement is here. They believe that it's consistent with the Western Area Land Use Plan due to the parcel being surrounded by other industrial zone parcels, and it's also in the land use plan due to its proximity to 152. And similarly, it's reasonable based on the land use plan, the property's location within a group of similarly zoned parcels, and because it proposes no detriment to the sound of the owners. They also referenced the 152 corridor in the reasonableness statement. So with that being said, I'll be glad to answer any questions or allow you to open
Ed, the, if you bring the map back up that had the, yeah, if you go over, I'll go back, I guess, maybe one more. Yeah, you were the right, you're the right one. Okay. So this...
It's the big, the big section at the bottom.
Yes.
You said that was a land, farmland preservation?
Well, not, not farmland preservation, but it's in the land use deferral program. That is the taxing program that we have. They have a deferred acreage or a deferred cost on the, or assessment on their value.
Okay. So it could, it could, at some point in future, changed to industrial or whatever, they wanted to possibly move it to?
Yes, sir. They could petition to do the same thing. It's according to, if you look at page three, it's 219 acres, and it's in farm use, and we have 40 acres in open land, 48 acres in pasture, and 124 acres in woodland. So it is in the land use deferral program. But, but you're right. It's currently RA, and if they came in and petitioned, it would go through a similar process we're in tonight.
So is that owned by different, different people?
It's, it's owned by a different entity other than the group petitioning tonight, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ed, is there any information on why it needs to be rezoned? I mean, is there a particular use that they want for this property that requires the rezoning?
No. And, and that's a good question because it's a general rezoning. And so, when we look at this particular table, one of the, the analysis, if you will, that the planning board, and I think they pass along this by way of their recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, is they feel that the uses that are in the industrial district are compatible with the surrounding area, in this case, the adjoining 86-acre industrial district. So there's no specific use. We don't know, no, sir.
Well, I understand that the surrounding property's zoned that way, but I have a little bit of an issue with changing the zoning, not knowing what the end result's going to be, because, you know, industrial's very wide as far as what it allows.
Well, it's a general rezoning. We, we can't require the applicant to, to provide a use when there is no use. I mean, it's, it's certainly a legislative action. It's allowed in the ordinance, and it's their opportunity to do so. But it's, it's a good point.
Yeah, we typically, with the general rezoning, we don't ask about specific uses and aren't supposed to, but when you analyze it, you typically take the heaviest, most intensive use that's allowed when you sort of conduct your analysis on, on the impacts. And that's where you're looking at the table of uses in these general categories and comparing them from what it is now and what's permitted and what it could be and what would be permitted in the industrial. So typically, no, we don't ask specifically, but you do analyze it by its most intensive use.
Well, my concern is there is a provision in the industrial zoning for conditional permit. And I would feel much better if this had a conditional permit on it, just so that we could limit to what actually went there.
Well, one thing, and not to minimize your concern, but this area, where a lot of this area is located in the Cottle Creek watershed.
Right.
And so everything that it's above 12% built-upon area has got to come back before this board for a, for a permit, for an impervious cover permit. So you see something in terms of a specific use, but it may be permitted. Like this particular application tonight, it's a legislative action, and it requires some type of approval from this board before they can proceed. Shane and I have been doing this a long time, and we tell every one of those folks that submit something. It may seem like formality, but you need to show up in front of the board. This is your application. All we're doing is, we're processing it. We're not there to advocate for your position. So it's a point well taken. Again, it's, it's certainly something to consider.
Would you say that again, if it's beyond 12% of what?
Built-upon area. So an acre, the, I think if my math is right, the, if it's an acre lot at 12%, you're looking around no more than 5,000 square feet can be. That's building, any parking area, outbuildings, things like that. So it's fairly limiting in terms of that scope. So anybody that buys an acre and wants to put sizable building, 20,000-square-foot building and have parking and things like that, they're going to need to come back before this board. Everyone that's out here, I think, has come through that process in front of this board since 1994. They all get the special non-residential intensity allocation.
All right, any other questions for Ed?
Ken, I would say the applicant here, if he's got any questions, I'd like to recognize him to go next.
All right, thank you, Ed. Are you Paul?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward and, and speak?
Thank you, Commissioners. Give you a little background about me. Paul Callaway. My address is 112 Penn Tail Run Drive in Mooresville. I'm a local businessman. I've been in the Mooresville area for 43 years. We run, as our company, an industrial cleaning business. We do cleaning, painting for plants like the old Philip Morris plant and any, any manufacturing facility. We formed Cash Properties about 20 years ago, I guess 30 years ago now, time flies. We built our first building in Lakeside Park there in Mooresville. Got 16,000-square-foot piece of property, and we accommodate mostly service-type businesses from a welder to a guy that details cars, and one other guy, he sells cars. He has like a little showroom area. In 2000, we built 22,000-square-foot of area in Talbot Point Business Park, in which we've got a printing, they do screen printing. We have one that does signs, so, and then we take the back building. Recently, we purchased another 12,000-square-foot building in Mooresville, and we have a company coming in that sells body shop equipment, being the frame straighteners and other things. With that being said, I've tried to conduct all of our, our business interest, what would really fit in well with the community that we're around. And recognizing the statement that the neighbors made over here, the lady that I bought the property from, Frances Neal, she is part of that community, and she had expressed to me that there was concern about maybe Mr. Perdula, about some of the things he was doing on his property. So she has a condition in the deed, a provision limiting that there could never be an asphalt plant, a concrete plant, nor any material stored of either concrete or, or asphalt. So there is some limitations as far as what to do. We have a, and it's totally preliminary, you asked a question, sir, about possibly what we may...
Give it to the card.
Keeping in line with what I've, I've been familiar with through the years, is developing, we build metal buildings, we have facades to the buildings, you know, where they're nice in appearance. And again, in, in, I guess, the properties surrounding it, they do have race shops, and they've got people who support the racing, and I'm sure there's probably other businesses in there. So that would basically be the primary intent in use, you know, for that property. Nothing heavy industrial. That's really not what I've, I've ever got into on that.
All right, any questions for the applicant?
Well, with eight tracts that look like you're dividing that into, you're, you're expecting small, smaller businesses that could go right into that and probably would not have to come back before us to begin with, then?
It probably, what Ed had mentioned, since it is such a limit to the watershed, if I'm correct, Ed, it probably would still have to come back. Most buildings out in that area are probably 5,000 to 10,000-foot range by what I've seen, you know, through the years. So it would probably have to come back to, to the board.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Callaway. All right, so now we will conduct a public hearing. We'll open the floor for anyone that would like to come up and speak to this topic, for Anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we'll discuss the case.
Can, Ed, can you show me where the folks live that were, that spoke in public comment? Right across the street?
I'm not exactly sure, but I think it's, I think it's right in here.
Okay. Is that right?
Okay, so this would... Okay, so I think this would be Ms. Sekler, and this is her daughter that's here?
No.
Now?
That's her.
Okay.
Well, we're, we kind of blew past that already.
I was just finishing you.
I think we've got them highlighted in blue. Isn't that right, Ed? All right, Commissioners, we have provided for us, on page one, and again, on page four, statements of consistency and reasonableness.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer up a motion on the statements of consistency.
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Z-01-18 is consistent with the Western Area Land Use Plan due to the parcel being surrounded by other industrial zone parcs. Z-01-18 is consistent with the western area land use plan due to the parcel being surrounded by other industrials on parcels. The industrial zoning is acceptable to the land use plan due to its proximity to NC Highway 152. I make that in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion on that? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye. And then I'd make a motion for the statements of reasonableness in the form of a motion. Z-01-18 is reasonable based on the western land use plan allowing for this type of zoning, the property's location within a group of similarly zoned parcels and because it poses no detriment to the surrounding property owners of the request is also reasonable due to the proximity of Highway 152 corridor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve Z-01-18.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of approving Z-01-18, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to item four. This is something that came out of a lot of months of discussion. Starting back in June of last year, we've had a large group of folks from across the county have come together to work on a lot of issues that are facing the county. Yes?
Is this financial?
Yeah, that's what I meant. The comprehensive financial report, that's what I was talking about.
Coming to work on what?
Folks been working on this for about six months. Sorry about that, Leslie.
Is she gonna read all this to us tonight? Not to me.
Good evening. I'm Meg Blue with Martin Starnes and Associates and I'm here to present your 2017 audited financial statements. First, I'd like to thank you on behalf of Martin Starnes for having us as your auditors this year. We really appreciate it. Over some audit highlights. We have issued an unmodified or clean opinion and we really appreciate the cooperation of all of your staff, Leslie and Derek and everyone else in the Finance Department. Yes?
Can the audience hear her? I'm not hearing her real well. Is her mic on? All right.
You gotta eat it.
Talk louder.
Can you pull it a little closer maybe? All right.
There you go. Is that better?
Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry. This is your general fund summary. It shows your revenues and expenditures for the past two years. There's been an increase in revenues of $5 million, which is roughly a 4% change. The main reason for this increase is the increase in local option sales tax distributions from the state. Expenditures increased $6.9 million, which is a 5% change and this is mainly due to an increase in education expenses and public safety expenses. And we'll go over those later in more detail. Fund balance serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available. There are five classifications: non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Non-spendable are typically in non-cash form. This is your inventories and your pre-pays usually. Restricted is restricted by external restrictions, by laws or granting agencies or the state. Committed is internal restrictions and it requires board action to commit and to uncommit and they do not expire. And assigned are internal constraints, less than committed, typically they expire and don't require board action to undo. And unassigned is the remainder with no external or internal restrictions. This is the total fund balance over the past three years. This year, it was $51,459,757. That's an increase of $959,188. There's also a decrease in inventories of $7,568 and the net change in fund balance before inventory decrease is $966,756, if you're looking in your report and looking for that number. Fund balance, this slide details the available fund balance calculation set by the LGC. It is your total fund balance less your non-spendable, less your restricted for stabilization by state statute, which is restricted by law and not considered available. This is the calculation used to compare you to other units. The calculation of your available fund balance for the current year is above. This is an increase in available fund balance of $2,742,168 from the prior year. It takes your fund balance less your 3.1 million of non-spendable, less the 13 million of stabilization for $35,018,77. Your unassigned fund balance would be your available fund balance, less the remainder of the restricted items, your committed fund balance and your assigned fund balance. This amount increased from the prior year by $1,056,787. Top three revenues: property taxes, sales tax, and restricted intergovernmental revenues. These are typically grants from other agencies. Your other revenues are made up of other taxes and licenses, unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, permits and fees, sales and services, investment earnings, and miscellaneous revenues. Your total revenues for the year were $140,204,010. We'll go over the top three revenues now. The property taxes here show an increase of $1.2 million or 1.5%. Local option sales tax, as I mentioned earlier, increased $3.2 million or 16%. Restricted intergovernmental revenues decreased $285,000 or 1.3%, which we consider to be comparable to prior year. This shows your top three functions of expenditures: education, human services, and public safety. Your other expenditures are made up of general government, transportation, economic and physical development, cultural and recreation, and debt service. Total expenditures for the year were $138,416,537. The largest function of expenditures was education. This shows an increase of $2.7 million or 6.6%. Human services, this shows an increase of $674,000 or 2%. Public safety expenditures increased $2.8 million or 10.9%. And your debt service expenditures decreased $1 million or 6.4%. We'll go over the enterprise funds. The landfill is first. The landfill unrestricted net position for the current year is $3,726,394. Cash flows provided by operations, $2,627,972. And net income is $90,992. The airport fund shows unrestricted net position for the current year of $2,289,891. Cash flow from operations, or, excuse me, cash flow used by operations, $55,635 and net income of $1,094,315. A couple of things about the upcoming year. GASB 75 refers to your OPEB changes. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. One thing we just want to point out is that this change will have a large impact from what we have heard so far. It will be similar to the local government employee retirement system and the law enforcement officer separation allowance changes. They will affect your disclosures and it will affect your numbers and it will also require that you, every unit, have a full OPEB valuation for the current year. So, the one reason we want to make sure we mention this is so that we get all of the information in so that it doesn't cause any reporting delays in 2018. The compliance changes for 2018. One of the main ones is that the state has required that the federal direct benefit expenditures come off of the schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards. This will decrease the threshold for testing major programs or determining major programs and it will require a lot of additional testing in the current year. And so, that could have a large impact as well as the Office of the State Auditor has required an agreed-upon procedure for programs that they deem high risk and they are going to specify the procedures that we're supposed to perform. And we cannot determine how much additional work that will be until we are given our letter of instruction from the State Auditor. Any questions?
Yes. The OPEB, how much, how much impact do you, can you calculate how much impact that's gonna have on us?
I cannot. The, we cannot. The valuation is performed by actuaries and we are not actuaries. And they are used to performing those valuation calculations and they are also aware of the new standards that are coming out. So, I can't speak to how that would impact. You would have to talk to the actuary. And from my understanding is that they are going to provide more detailed information and possibly be available for questions if you have any.
I'm a bit concerned about why it would be brought up if we have no part in it. We have been making, we have been making deposits into everybody's retirement account as we have been told to over the years. And you're saying it's being changed, but nobody knows by how much it's being changed.
The liability for the other post-employment benefits for after retirement, such as healthcare, will have a new standard that applies to it and we're required to implement those new standards as they come out.
Okay. And this is a federal new standard?
Yes.
It is. And what the OPEB for us means is we'll have different reporting for our retiree health insurance program. So, it doesn't have anything to do with retirement through the local government system or the 401K. It doesn't have anything with that. It is simply the retiree health insurance.
So, this is all health insurance related, really?
Excuse me?
It's really just health insurance related?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other question?
Mine would be for Leslie. The enterprise funds, for instance, the landfill fund, is that just, that profit, is that swept into capital fund for repairs and expansion for the future?
It is. We, Caleb and his crew for the landfill, they do a great job and we actually generate funds basically every year in the landfill. And that money is set aside. The next landfill sale that we'll build is several years out, but that's predicted right now to be $10 million. So, we've always been able to pay cash for that when we do major projects in the landfill.
It almost tripled this year in income.
That would be because in 2016, we completed the last sale. So, sale number four was completed in 2016 and that's why so much more cash dropped for us.
Last sell, C.E.L.L. Sell, the last sell?
Yes.
Leslie, I noticed that our debt service revenues were down $1 million. What, did we pay something off or did we refinance?
That's just the debt service that's dropping off every year and it's the interest cost. We didn't pay, we're always paying something off, but it wasn't any of the major projects that we have going. But the school debt that was issued in the past, it's dropping off by about that much annually.
You had one big refinance.
But that wasn't, that wasn't in 2017.
No, 2016.
So, you know, this next, in 2018, the very first thing we did in 2018 was borrow $27.5 million for the West Elementary. So, that's gonna go up, but that's why.
What's a guesstimate? Do you think that debt service will increase?
Well, and now that I say that, in 2018, it's not going to increase as much as you would expect because we deferred, due to cash flow purposes, we deferred principal payments in 2018. So, that'll really start kicking in in 2019. And maybe two and a half million?
Okay.
We have it factored in. It should, it should flow. I mean, we've, you know, we've looked at the projection for cash flow in the future.
But then we have a lot dropping off between now and what, 19?
Twenty-one.
Twenty? Is it 21?
Twenty and 21. But as you noted, in 2017, a million dropped. More will drop this year. So, when we go to slot that debt service in 2019, we'll basically be paying what we've been paying for about the last six years.
Oh, good.
Anything else for our guest? All right. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
There's no action to be taken on this, right? It's just information?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, these guys?
Now.
All right. So, Paula Dibley from Run Cabarrus Community College will come and begin a presentation for us. Paula, thank you for being with us.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thanks for having me. Good evening. My name is Paula Dibley, as Greg said. And for those of you who don't know me, I work with the marketing and new student recruitment at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I also have the pleasure of co-leading the branding and telling our story working group through the Growing Rowan Initiative. But more than any of that, I am here tonight as a Rowan County resident who is passionate about this and cares very much about this county and this place. My husband and I moved here about seven years ago from Washington DC and that was two kids ago and I can tell you that we have really loved raising our family here. So, when the CBB embarked upon a rebranding effort for the county, I was thrilled because we rebranded Rowan Cabarrus Community College back in 2013 for our 50th anniversary. And I experienced the excitement and frustration of a project like that. And I just really, I love the new Rowan County brand. I feel like it resonates with me. But I also feel like it resonates with a lot of people who are not just like me. The way I see it, the branding initiative was phase one. We learned a lot through the research and we now have some really beautiful logos. It is incredibly exciting to see how uniform and appealing all of the different county logos look. But a logo is not a brand. And now, in my opinion, is the time to bring that brand to life. You know, as Steve Chandler shared with us when they revealed the brand truths and the brand story, the biggest takeaway that I had was that some big internal problems here in Rowan County existed. Our internal perception of ourselves was very low. And if any of you've read a self-help book or two, you will have heard that self-confidence is sort of the foundation of everything that you do. you do, right? So, lack thereof can completely dismantle any efforts that you put forth. So, if we can't really figure out our own issues, we're going to have a hard time selling ourselves to others. In June, our elected leaders brought us together, brought together a large group of people from across Rowan County to start the Growing Rowan Initiative and it was unprecedented in that all of the municipalities in the county came together and really signed this proclamation saying that we were going to work together to move and push Rowan County forward. They gave us some training in this cool concept called Strategic Doing and empowered us to use shared resources to make change right now. Strategic Doing kind of throws strategic planning out the window and says, no thank you to bureaucracy, let's emphasize getting things done and doing all that you can without formal authority and approval, whatever you can bring to the table. So, our objective was to create this shared vision and implement it and promote an aggressive, dynamic economic development for, for our county. So, that's what we did. The eight critical focus areas were developed and each one has its own working group. As I said, I'm proud to co-chair the branding and telling our story group with Mike Miller from Miller Davis. And since group, since June, our group has met, met monthly, as have many of the other groups. We've worked collaboratively with the Chamber to help shape the direction of the Chamber Relocation Guide and we're developing a roadshow to take around the county to, and to local businesses to really help bring that brand to life, share it and deputize the community to really tell our story. However, our biggest challenge is that we kept running into roadblocks without fail at every single meeting, somebody, the conversation would somehow turn to, but really, who's responsible for truly marketing Rowan County? And for a while, we really did our best to sort of set that to the side and just keep our heads down and think, you know, we were just this grassroots group of, of marketing and communications folks and we're just going to do the best we can with what we can bring to the table. But after a while, we couldn't ignore the, the issue. In fact, especially other groups started coming to our meetings and saying, hey, who's responsible for marketing Rowan County? In my opinion, we are now entering that phase two. We have to take this new brand and really tell the story. Unfortunately, right now, while, while we aren't out there telling our story, other people are telling it for us. Old websites about bad water levels on High Rock Lake from 2002 populate the search engines. Suspect news sources receive lots of web traffic for false negative news. PR 101, Public Relations 101, is that you must tell your own story lest someone else tell it for you. In today's day and age of Facebook posts and tweets all the time, there is constantly this fresh supply of new information out there that we need to combat the negativity with positivity. And as I'm sure you will hear from our speakers here tonight, we have so much to be positive about. We have so much to be proud of, but we're just not telling our story and I think it's time we do. It's my pleasure to turn it over to James Meacham. Thank you.
There you go, that's why you don't move it. The Grow Roco Marketing Group had asked me to come and speak briefly on, just a quick reminder of the brand process, what was used to develop that, how that structure was created and then also how it was implemented. So, refreshing back, there were a series of themes that we used to build and construct the brand story for Rowan County. The themes are up here. Many of these themes are at play today. We use those to build upon the structure and as just a reminder, we had a board appointed by the Commissioners Task Force to do an initiative that was funded completely by the Tourism Authority. One of the reasons that worked and for whatever considerations you take for tonight, I would say that the focus was helpful because we had an agency that was dedicated to that mission. You had a broad group of people appointed by this board for consideration of any brand and any changes. Additionally, a specific funding stream was established for that. The Tourism Authority had taken its occupancy tax revenues to fully fund that initiative to do the marketing for the community. From that process, you remember we had a big brand rollout which launched at the end of 2016 and most of 2017 was spent developing the brand for the community. It was a multi-level process that started with the county as the hierarchy message and from there, built out to all the different agencies that you see today. It is far more than logos, but logos are sometimes a good representation to show the connections that have been made through this process. Starting with the county, hitting with many different development agencies, departments within the county and then working your way down to communities and different organizations within the community, the key thing being bringing everyone together and centrally connecting the groups in one place. From there, this has extrapolated further into the community where we're dealing with individual groups and in 2018, the Tourism Authority is launching an initiative called Arts and Ag to allow people to fully experience the brand, both visitors and residents alike, making those stronger connections and bringing folks together. One of the things that will come forth tonight, I believe, will be a request for consideration from this board of supporting this initiative and just some things for consideration. One, marketing for the sake of marketing is not effective. So, if you take this under consideration, make sure there's a clear goal, specific direction. One of the reasons the brand worked is that we worked with you as a Board of Commissioners and the community to create that clear direction. We came forward with a program, came forward with a recommendation of how it be funded, came forward with a recommendation of who should serve on the task force, how that will be structured and then engaging and implementing the community. That way, there was a very clear defined purpose. And one of the things that we made clear with the Tourism Authority is we would move forward creating the brand, establishing the brand, paying for the brand process, then we would kind of exit center stage right and return back to the tourism visitor-based marketing so that we wouldn't get too far off our path. What has made this so successful for us is the ability to incorporate many of the people you see on the screen today, whether it's our attractions, agricultural, tourism, arts, culture. It is allowing us to, the brand has allowed us to bring those groups together. Arts and Ag that we're launching next year is a good representation of the brand working, of bringing different groups together, merging it into one identifiable experience for people. I think from this in mind, whatever you consider moving forward, just make sure it's focused, make sure it's clear and directive and that you're able to achieve the objectives that you're sought out for. I will say the brand has been a wonderful pleasure for us to do on behalf of you as the county and behalf of the other partners in the community. We have more groups that are engaging in the brand through 2018 and will continue to roll that out over the next year. And then the pleasure to have Derry Caldwell with Novant Health.
Thanks, James. Thank you. I'm Derry Caldwell. I'm the President of Novant Health Rowan Medical Center and I wanted to talk for a few minutes about why our request of you tonight is important to the healthcare sector of Rowan County. So, I'm not just representing Novant Health, I'm also representing the Hefner VA Medical Center, I'm representing the Community Care Clinic, Healthy Rowan and all of the entities in our county that try to touch the health and make it better. One of the things that we think is really important to the success of the healthcare sector in this community is bringing our brand to life and the ask that we're going to make of you tonight is really critical for our success for the future. Ten years ago, Novant Health was chosen by the Board of Directors of Rowan Medical Center to be the strategic partner going forward to try to grow healthcare in this community. Novant Health was chosen specifically because of its initiative to bring more resources to Rowan County and our, the commitment of Novant Health to bring the best and the brightest people and the latest technology to this community and to grow those services in this community. We have had a great track record over the last 10 years of making huge improvements, bringing new resources, lots of new physicians, lots of new technology to this community and continue to grow at a very nice pace and we're very excited about the future. But the one thing that has been a little bit of a challenge for us is being able to recruit physicians, to recruit nurses and to recruit staff so that we can continue to grow. We have been successful in many areas in doing that, but we don't want to just recruit people to come and work at Rowan Medical Center. We want to recruit physicians, nurses and staff who want to come and work and live in Rowan County. And we think that's really important for the future tax base of our community, for the growth of our school system and for really elevating Rowan County to be a premier county and a big player in economic development and the future of our children going forward. We, Novant Health gave a vote of confidence to Rowan County when they decided to merge with Rowan Medical Center because Novant Health saw the potential of Rowan County for the future. My family gave a vote of confidence to Rowan County two years ago when we decided to relocate and move to Rowan County and become citizens here and we are delighted to live here and be a part of this community. The greatest thing that we feel is needed, not only from the healthcare sector but my family in general, is to promote the positive aspects of Rowan County and we believe that the ask we're making of you tonight will help us tremendously with that. We have a wonderful community to live in, to work in and to recreate in and to be able to tell that to the world is something we'll feel is vital and critical going forward and so we are hoping to move that forward. There's our helicopter. We just added helicopter service to Rowan County which places us at the center of Novant Health. We are halfway equidistant between Charlotte and Forsyth and we are the third largest hospital and continue to grow and we want to continue to bring those resources and we need your help to convince people that this is the greatest place to come as we're recruiting physicians going forward. So, thank you very much and I'll turn things over to Joyce Mercier.
Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for having us here and giving us a few minutes. My name is Joyce Karen Mercier. I own Mercier Marketing, which is a motorsports marketing agency. I've been in NASCAR racing for well over 30 years. I moved to North Carolina about 14 years ago because of NASCAR being the hub here in Charlotte. We bought a lake house about seven years ago and about a year and a half ago, feeling that there was a great sense of community here and pride, we moved here permanently. So, my, my home office is here at the lake. Most recently, I was just voted on the board for the High Rock Lake Association, so you can see that I definitely have a passion for where I live. I've also joined the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce where I've met lots of people and found that we do have that sense of community. But one of the things that I found from my motorsports marketing background is, it's not just public relations and marketing, but it's how are we communicating, how often and how well and how is it resonating with the people that can use our assets? Assets meaning High Rock Lake. We're the second largest lake in the state. I had no idea. We were living here as a weekender. We actually had the Dragon Boat Festival in my backyard. Had no idea. And so, working with the Chamber of Commerce, I asked how we can volunteer and how we can communicate that. A lot of people at the lake didn't know about the festival, but it's a great asset and we want to encourage the public, not only from the Salisbury area but also from Davidson County, of course, Rowan County and beyond. We have a great asset, it's something to share. I do want to share one quick story with you. Because I've been racing, I have a lot of friends living in Lake Norman. I chose High Rock Lake for a reason. Why, I didn't want to see them Monday through Friday and on the weekends, but I did invite a friend over and it was on a Saturday afternoon and it was quiet and he just said, what is happening? Where is everybody? And I was like, aha, that's what I like. However, it is a double-edged sword. We don't want to turn High Rock Lake and our community into Lake Norman, but we do want other people to get to enjoy it. As a member of the High Rock Lake Association, we do want to work with Cube Hydro and with the county to find the right asset to share the area for recreation, for families, for picnics, for kayaking and use that asset to the best of our ability. So, thank you.
Hey Joyce, you didn't show your, your pretty pictures here. High Rock Lake, more High Rock Lake, no more High Rock Lake. Hi, my name's Mikey Wetzel. I'm a Rowan County entrepreneur here tonight to stress the importance of marketing the county's many wonderful assets, High Rock Lake and the hospital and the schools and everything we got. Like every other pillar that's discussed tonight, if we don't tell our story about business opportunity, then someone else will. That's what my talk is about. So, I'm a West Coast transplant and I moved here about 10 years ago and a very common question I get is, why would you leave the West Coast and move to Rowan County of all places? Well, I worked in high-tech and I was doing very well. I worked for Microsoft, Xbox, fun job, made decent money and I had the luxury of working remote, so that gave me the freedom to kind of move about the country. So, I decided to pursue a dream. Now, this is a dream that's completely unaffordable for me, even my high-tech wages on the West Coast. I went lake shopping. So, I came across High Rock Lake and that's where I live today. And when I was doing my research 10 years ago, I can say that there wasn't a lot of information on High Rock Lake. There still is not and in fact, what's there is frankly negative. As we saw that picture at the beginning of the talk, we saw the lake being down in 2002, that's still page one on Google search results. Well, fortunately, there was an aggressive realtor who knew there's people like me out there, people who dreamed of living on a lake, something they can afford, has a nice climate and a slower pace of life. And so, thanks to his aggressive marketing, here I am today. Now, when I came out here, I immediately loved it. I mean, you can imagine going from the high cost and traffic life to all of a sudden the peaceful living on High Rock Lake, honestly feeling like a king. Well, the interesting thing was as I got to meet people, I found out that the people who live here are often the county's worst critics. I mean, people were telling me horrible things about the schools, about crime, about real estate, about what the government is or isn't doing and even about the perception of businesses struggling here. As I did my own research and got to know the place a little better, I just didn't get it. I, I don't, I didn't see the same thing that they saw. I would say that their story that they're telling is inaccurate at worst and outdated at best. I'm sorry, I'm like behind slides. Okay. So, what I saw was a lot of opportunities. I see it everywhere. I mean, look north, southwest, there's economic activity all around us and we're right smack in the geographic center of it. So, there's huge opportunities there. Plus, you look at any of these larger areas or where I came from, a county of 2 million people, and I just see all kinds of opportunity. So, first of all, we got, we have the second largest lake in North Carolina, but I can't buy a boat in Rowan County. Where can I rent a boat or a jet ski, buy a kayak? I mean, there's a couple of places, there's big box stores, but where's all the, the businesses popping up around the lake? Like imagine Lake Norman or really any other lake in this entire country. It, there's a lot of opportunity just around that. Sports hunting, entertainment. If you talk about, talk to any young person, I don't care if you're talking to a teenager, a college kid, anybody 25 to 35 that wants to go out on a date or hang out with their friends somewhere, what do they do? They get in their car and they head south. Worse than that, they get in a moving van and they move south. And so, these people are telling us that, hey, we need more things to do. Well, as a businessperson, what I see is opportunity. I see like, man, we're to like the heart of NASCAR, we don't have a go-kart place, you know, we don't have, you, you could just come up with tens and tens of ideas of things that there could be, there's a market for because people are telling you every day there's a market for it. Services, the menus and retails. My example here is how many of us in this room, how many times have we been somewhere else in another community, another neighborhood somewhere else and we come across a cute shop or maybe there's some sort of service that they have in the city they don't have here and you think, wow, why don't we have that back where I live? That you're telling yourself of all the opportunity that's here. I'll tell you, there's much more opportunity here than if you were go to start a similar type of business down in Charlotte where you've already got lots of competition. Finally, we got technology. As I said, I'm from Microsoft and I spent my whole career in technology, so I know the space a little bit and technology can happen anywhere. You can create a mobile app right here in Rowan County. It's crazy to me that people aren't, you know, it doesn't hurt that we're the home of gigabit fiber. So, for, for all these opportunities, I finally said, you know what, I'm going to put my money where my mouth is. So, I left my high-tech career, I sold all my stock, I borrowed every penny I could and I opened a business. That's a restaurant, it's called Go Burrito and we're doing very well. We do 1.7 million in sales, 35 employees and these numbers are quite good. That puts us, if you think of like a normal restaurant, like a Burger King or Wendy's, we do double that. So, we're doing so well that we decided to franchise and we have locations coming up right now in Johnson City, Tennessee and Florida. And, sorry, let me catch up here a little bit. So, being a businessman has been a great experience for me. Working at Microsoft was great, but I really love being an entrepreneur and I find myself talking to people so often. If you come over to my house, we drink in- If you come over to my house, we drink in a beer, I'm going to tell you a business that you need to start. It's just the way I am. I can't escape it. You're going to tell me something, and I'm going to be like, "Go start a business." And I'm really passionate about, so I get more and more increasingly involved in my community, trying to promote business. And really, it's a story that needs to be told. It kind of kills me, it pains me, that we're not telling that story. And that's really what we're all here tonight, is convince the county that we need to tell that story better. Instead, not telling that story, this is what I hear. I go on Facebook, and I hear people complaining that Kmart's closing. I mean, really, Kmart's struggling all over the country. They're not, it's not a stain on Rowan County that Kmart's closing. I mean, I don't want any business to close, but what I see is opportunity. On that same post, I went and tagged a friend who has an idea to put in a trampoline park, and I'm like, "Man, maybe there's your opportunity, a big space like that, wall-to-wall trampolines like they have in Charlotte." And then, all the people in Rowan County would have to stop driving down there and spending their money down that way. I hear about the crime. I mean, no community's immune from that, right? I hear outdated information in our schools. We've got Mandy coming up next to tell you all these awesome things about our schools. And there's just, there's no story being told. Now, what about all the cars driving on eighty-five? And there's tens of thousands of them, and they're just driving by, have no idea what they're passing by. They have no idea that second-largest lake is right there. They have no idea that what are good things our schools are doing, our hospital, they have no idea what a good place it is to start business, that this is the home to Food Line, Cheerwine, of course, Go Burrito, that we have gigabit fiber, and that it's just such a great place. Lots of opportunity here. They're just driving right on by. And I feel like that's a shame, like, those people should know that Rowan County is a place to be. So, in conclusion, I run a successful business, and part of that is because I know what marketing is. A lot of you may have seen my billboard on eighty-five. I did that right when I'm a small, little mom-and-pop business starting out, and it's probably not common that somebody would go spend fourteen thousand dollars a year on a billboard for such a little business, but I think it's paid off. I understand marketing, and as I expand into these other states, it's even more important to me. So, I'm here tonight to tell you that, again, that if we don't tell our story about business as an opportunity, then someone else will. If you notice this graphic, it's a megaphone. I don't think we need to tell our story. I think we need to shout it. Thank you.
My name is Mandy Mills, and I'm a proud Rowan County native. I'm the Director of Career and Technical Education for Rowan Salisbury Schools. In education, we are tasked with keeping millennials engaged in their learning while at the same time building our future workforce. We have made great progress with our career academies. Some of these programs include masonry, carpentry, agriculture, farm-to-table, web design, broadcasting, marketing, computer programming, nursing, and most recently, with Golden Leaf Funding, advanced manufacturing, and robotics. And we don't plan to stop here. Rowan Salisbury Schools is committed to aligning our career and technical programs with the workforce needs of our county and the post-secondary education opportunities at Rowan Cabarrus. We need a market Rowan campaign to publicize these initiatives, because many people still think of us as vocational education and limited to the areas that were prevalent when they were in high school. Another reason to market the initiatives in Rowan County is that we have something to be proud of. Not only are the initiatives on target with the needs of our students, we have the community college, industry representatives, economic development, and many other entities working together to improve the workforce in our county. They are providing job shadow, internship, and apprenticeship opportunities for our students. We are trying to break out of our silos that we have been working in for so long. With a marketing campaign for Rowan County, it is our vision that our students and future citizens will realize that we, as a community, have set them up for success right here in Rowan County. Perspective is everything. Not only would a market Rowan campaign help change students' perspective of Rowan County, but it would also help change community perspective of our schools. I can't tell you how many times I have heard, "Why don't they teach blank in the schools anymore?" You can fill in this blank with just about anything, from bricklaying to agriculture to cooking and sewing. Nine times out of ten, the person has been misinformed. The success of our programs is being minimized by the public's lack of knowledge of our school system and our county as a whole. A market Rowan campaign will allow us to change that narrative and, at the same time, market ourselves to future citizens, investors, and industry. It is my hope that our collaborative efforts in telling our story will help our county to flourish, build a better tomorrow for our children, and help them realize, just as I did, that Rowan County is a great place to live, work, and raise their families. Thank you.
Commissioners, staff, thank y'all for having us tonight. It's an honor to stand before y'all. I'm here as Mayor of China Grove, representing the municipalities. The other night, at the municipal meeting, I believe a few commissioners were there. Thank y'all for being there. I kind of had an aha moment and changed my presentation probably within about five minutes before I gave it. And it was about how great China Grove was and all the great things happening in China Grove. And as I sat there and I reflected on what we have just been through and the campaigns that we're working on here in the county, I didn't have anything to talk about from the other municipalities. And I had my story to tell, but I didn't have anyone else's. And I think that as a whole, as a county, we run into that a lot. And I talk about wearing hats. I talk about different things that we do in this county, and I'm a pretty passionate person. So, they told me I had three or four minutes, so I'll try to keep it to that tonight. But what a great place we live when we get to travel and be out and tell our story. What a great place we live, and we just get to be here in our own county. And sometimes, we forget about to tell it to our neighbor or someone else. So, we were sitting there in the meeting the other night, and got talking about a lot of great things that were going on. And why in the world can China Grove not talk about what's happening in Granite Quarry? Great, great infrastructure, great partnership with the county, but why is every municipality not talking about this? Why can we not tell this story? This was something that was just outstanding to me. A few years ago, or maybe a little bit longer than a few years, hopefully, y'all remember the name KP Parks. This was an article that was in the Salisbury paper. But KP Parks comes back to Cleveland and to West Rowan. How great is this, that an outstanding athlete in our community comes back? Why in the world would Landis-North Carolina or Rockwell, or any of y'all, the commissioners, not talk about this? This was pretty important to me. My wife spent a few years at West Rowan teaching, spent a lot of time traveling, watching this young man play ball, and it was very exciting to me to see him come back and invest in our youth. Lastly, for those of y'all that know me, I've got to talk about China Grove at some point. A lot of great things happening in China Grove. Just a fun fact, we have more building permits issued in China Grove year-to-date in 2018 than all of 2017. A lot of great things happening in China Grove. We need to tell somebody that. That's a pretty cool fact right there. I can go on and on. I've got a list here. In Rockwell, Philtech expansion, why would we not talk about that? What a great, great thing going on there. Spencer Woods. Landis, redevelopment with the Wallace family into the Beer and Wine Festival. They took an old mill. And just the first venture that they did was they had a beer and wine festival in Landis-North Carolina. Man, I can go on and on, and I guess my time may be up tonight. But I am here representing the municipalities and how we've got to work together to tell our story and to tell each other's story, and then also to work with everyone else. So, thank y'all. I'll bring up Rod.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. It's good to be here. I certainly am excited to hear all the enthusiasm that's coming from this group of individuals that's been working on this marketing initiative over the past several months. And I certainly echo everything that they've said. They've said it better than I could probably ever say it. And certainly, I'm a big fan of Rowan County myself, having moved here just seven or eight months ago, for many of the reasons that have been outlined by the previous speakers. But they have tasked me tonight to talk with the less, about the less sexy part of this initiative, which is how will an initiative like this be administered? And James talked about the importance of structure and having accountability and having good representation of different folks involved with this initiative. And this group has thought about that, and they have decided that the structure that needs to be put in place to help hold us together and execute it in the manner that we hope it will be done will include a broad-based representation from several sectors, including education, the chamber, the business community, the CBB, and other people who are involved in marketing the county or have marketing as part of their responsibilities as an organization or as a business. And we were approached as the EDC about playing a role in being a fiscal agent for this operation. And our board discussed it. We're very excited about this initiative and feel like it's a small role that we can play in helping to make this initiative be successful by simply helping to pay the bills as they come due and helping to pull the committee together to make the decisions about how those funds will be spent. It will require, we think, a minimal amount of our time, but because of its importance, we think it's something that we need to commit our time and resources to. And that's all I have. And I'll pass it over to Mike.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing all of us tonight to speak to you. And my name's Mike Miller. I'm President Miller Davis, a full-service advertising and marketing firm here in Rowan County. I'm a native of Rowan County, born, raised here, faith, Irwin East. Love this county and very passionate about it. My business employs fifteen-plus employees, and they, most of which all live here. So, it is very, very important to all of us. And as well as Paula has already told you, I am co-chairman of the branding and telling our story. But as you've heard tonight with all of them, as my previous presenters have presented, unfortunately, we're allowing others to tell this story. We're not doing our best efforts to tell that. There's a lot of groups out there that are doing wonderful things to tell their story, but they're doing it within themselves. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes with the silos. But in order to drive these things that Mikey and some of these others have said, when you search, that each one of you have probably done online, you find this negativity, the only way to drive down that negativity is to drive it with positive. And how many people have heard positive things tonight? How many positive things have we all heard tonight? But we're not telling those, and they're being told amongst their groups and not amongst others. Our committee, the marketing committee, had developed these eight silos that we think are very big hotspots. Within these silos, you will see, you know, there's attractions, there's education, there's health care, there's green space and agriculture, there's High Rock Lake, there's the arts, there's the business community, as well as with what Lee was talking about, municipalities. Within each one of these organizations, you have strong companies, Novant, in the health care segment. You've got companies like Integro, and you've got Freightliner, they're in the business community. But y'all have small ones. Every one of these people are doing marketing and public relations, but they're doing them amongst their self-audience. What if all of them connected within each group? What would that do? That would connect all these groups together and grow the awareness of that tremendously. How big is that possibility? We did an analysis of the social media presence of each one of these segments, like municipalities. We took all the municipalities in the county. We took their Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all their social media. And as you see right here, we have a total of eight-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten social media presence within these groups. And that's a very, very small number, because we didn't dig in. We only used ten businesses in Rowan County, as you see right beside the business community. And there's many, many others. So, this number would gravitate up. And within that, there's the silos multiplier effect. We all know when we share things, that number gets shared out to others, okay? AMA states that an average shared audience per social user is three-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Let's put that to the side. Let's take a conservative number, a hundred. A hundred times eight-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten. I'm sure that's easy math, because we're just adding zeros. That's eighty-nine million-plus people that we can get the message out to. But we've got to do that in a organized and a collaborative and a structured way. We can all say, "Well, it's everybody's responsibility to do it themselves." But what is Mikey doing with Go Burrito? He's marketing, and he's growing his business. He loves Rowan County, and he loves, he wants to make this a better place, but his central focus is that. So is all the other ones that have been here tonight. So, there needs to be a plan put in place to bring all this together and drive that. And as you see here, a planned, outlined draft would be a segment, silos ambassadors. We would create ambassadors for each one of these areas that we've created here with silos. And those people would be responsible for driving that content across all the other silos. Blog research and writing and publishing. Blogs drive search engine rankings and everything else. Assets. What are our assets with a marketing campaign? They're photos and videos. Of course, we would have to come up with a marketable website to drive this. SEO on the website, organic and PPC. PPC is pay-per-click. That's the ads at the top of your search results or over on the side. And obviously, a very strong thing that I've showed you previous this is the social media, which is organic and sponsored ads. And as well as we would solicit, you know, consumer pubs and editorial story submissions with the blogs. All these can be and possibly should be part of this plan. But that plan would be driven and be approved, and just like Rod said, through this advisory board. Obviously, what is our target audience? You know, if you remember back, you know, with Steve Chandler, you know, he stated that, you know, and I think Paula or somebody else, you know, refreshed our memory, we're our own worst enemies as far as the negativity that we project about ourselves. So, we have to market to ourselves, remind ourselves what all these great things are within our county, but then we also have to push out from that. So, that would be our target audience. So, now, what is left? We need to tell this story. And it'd be told in a concise message and plan and implemented. Matrix would be set up to basically judge the effectiveness of every execution, and those executions would be modified based on what those, based on the results of those executions. But I would like to thank my other presenters here tonight for coming up. This has been a great, this has been a great journey the last year, you know, when we started this, kicked us off last, and it was so rewarding to me to see all these various people from all these. I mean, I didn't know Mikey Wetzel very well before we started this process. Now, I see him once a week, twice a week, three times a week, depending on what it is. It could be the Idea Center, which is a great, another asset that we're starting to develop. But that's what this is all about. It's all about us coming together as one and pushing it forward, but it has to be done not as a hit or miss. It needs to be a plan and executed as such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. So, I think what, the bottom line to me is, when we began conversations in a room and someone said, "By the way, who is in charge of marketing our county?" The answer came up blank. There's no one that's responsible for doing that. There's, just like any community, we struggle with some things, and we're working diligently toward constant improvement. We've got a lot to be thankful for. You guys know I'm not from here, I'm from Florida. We came here with a purpose, and we've fallen in love with this community. And if we didn't like it, we wouldn't be here. We're attracting a lot of folks here, but we've got to be in control of our own story and got to determine that while we don't need to cover up anything that we're struggling with, we do need to resolve ourselves, to talk about the things that are good about this community. You know, I get the opportunity to speak a lot out at civic groups and churches and schools, and I say this all the time, if I have a picture in my mind of communities all across the country that are like ours, who are trying to figure out how to compete in this new, modern economy, they're not as lucky as we are. And they'll hire a consultant, and they'll ask that consultant, "Tell us, what can we do to begin to compete?" And I picture in my mind this consultant sitting at home at one in the morning, scratching his head, trying to figure out, you know, "What do I tell this community?" They're not on any major interstate. interstate. They have no water. They have no cheap, reliable energy. They have no colleges. They have no arts. They have no agritourism. They have no parks. They have no location between major commercial areas. What do I tell those folks? Well, what do you tell them is, if you can convince Rowan County to trade with you guys, that's your biggest hope. And the fact is, we've got an awful lot going for us, but we seem to be mired in the negative and only want to talk about that. Sold a few houses in my time. Never put in the paper that I got a really crappy house I'm trying to sell. Someone make me an offer. You know? You talk about what's good about it. And the bad's going to get out, because it is. We don't need to worry about that. We have things, just like every community across the state, folks around our region, folks across the country, are dealing with stuff as the economy changes, as society changes. These are things that we're all struggling with. Sometimes we just need to get out more, you know, and see how good we've got it. So I appreciate you guys spending all of your time. There's over 200 Rowan County citizens that are currently meeting in eight different groups. This is one of them. And this group is coming forward with a request and a recommendation that we work through the EDC, that will, this group will create much along the way that the branding committee did, a representative board across different sectors of our community, business, healthcare, agriculture, and on and on. And they'll bring those names before us, just like the Convention and Visitors Bureau did. And we will empower those folks to act on our behalf. And then we will go about the business of creating some good marketing for Rowan County, not only for us and our community to know the good things that are happening. By the way, Mr. Mayor, congratulations. It's a good thing. Proud of you guys. Hold on, because it's going to get better. So this group is asking for some funding from the county. Again, would be administered by the EDC. I was at the board meeting with the EDC when they discussed this and voted unanimously to support this and be the fiscal agent for that. So the ask is for $80,000 to begin that process. And so the next move then would be for these folks to come back to us with a list of recommended people that will be part of that board. But I'd like to bring that to this board tonight. And that money would come from our economic development funds that are restricted for economic development. And so I would make that in the form of a motion. And if we have a second, then we can have discussion after that.
I second that.
All right. So the floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see a budget before I approve money. I mean, just writing a blank check for $80,000 is not something I'm comfortable with till I see some type of budget expenditures and what they plan on doing with this money. And I don't think that's unreasonable to ask for.
Add something different?
Yeah.
The, I don't know if Mike can explain a little bit more of the social media part to me. I thought that was very interesting. What was the section you had where there was 89 million whatevers, presences, clicks? I don't know.
Talking about this, this number?
Yeah, the 60,000, is that individual people?
That's, that's, each municipality has their own Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter account, and all that. That is each individual, all those social media users within all those accounts combined under the municipalities category. So that's all 11 municipalities in the county together. Likewise with education. Education is Rowan Cabarrus Community College, our school system, Catawba, Livingstone, private schools, Salisbury Academy, North Hills, they all are part of our education component here. So all these are within anyone.
So you, so they would be in a group, say, Rowan County group, or would they, somewhere in their profile, they would have, you know, Rowan Cabarrus Community College listed? How do you?
Basically, those are all friends of those particular organizations, Facebook page, Twitter page, Instagram page, YouTube, as well as Vimeo, as far as sharing videos between those two. So some of those people are, maybe do live here, some of them don't. Some of them maybe just be friends of people that do work for a college. But who, we're about marketing ourselves out, okay? So that connection doesn't matter whether they reside here or they reside outside. It's a touch point, just like any TV ad you run, any traditional marketing you do with TV, billboards, newspaper, it's the person that sees that, no matter who they are, that you're drawing into and you're creating that impression and that drive back to it.
So you're, so you're saying if, like, one of these groups, if they click like, that's what you're talking about, the person that likes that group?
Yeah.
Any person associated with it?
When you, when you share something on somebody's Facebook page, it's going to go out to everybody that's a shared like on that Facebook page. So, and all these are Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. And these are all actual numbers. And like I say, these aren't nowhere near all of them. This is a brief overshot. I would dare say there's probably at least, if you drill down to all businesses and all that, and so it would be much greater number.
Okay. That makes more sense to me, because I know, when I saw 60,000 municipalities, I didn't realize you were talking about different platforms. I'm thinking, I don't know 60,000 Facebook users for, you know?
It's different platforms. It's all, it's all your social media platform, which in today's marketing world, there is not one other execution that is more cost-effective than doing social media marketing. None. Zero. Because on average, it's between a dollar and 25 to 250 per 1,000 impressions. You start talking TV, you're at $28 per 1,000 impression. We know what direct mail is. Newspaper, you're roughly $18 per 1,000 when you're paying for an ad in a newspaper. There is no other medium, and I think, you know, the TDA is, you know, is an example of that. And the marketing that James and his group does that pushes out, that drives. Social media and digital marketing is, as, you know, the chairman said earlier, it is today's marketing and today's platform that we have to engage. And I didn't bring the numbers, but 78% of the adult population in the U.S. are on Facebook. So, you know, there's some staggering numbers within each one of the social media, you know, what I call bowls, that actually, you know, that everybody is on it. There's 500,000 users that are added to Facebook daily. Daily.
Daily?
Right now. Daily.
Hey, Mike, could you, could you talk to Commissioner Pierce's question about, you know, dollars, budget?
You know, they're, honestly, this is a plan that has been strategized between our group and, you know, between, you know, research that we have done. You know, as far as assigning dollars, you know, we could, you know, work with the, you know, the committee and, yeah. I, I don't think me, or I don't think any of these other people coming before you are asking for a blank check. Okay? Craig, I totally agree with you. Before I give $10, $100 to anybody, I want to know what you're spending it for. Asking any of my employees, they come to me and ask me the expense, that what are you spending it for? I totally agree, you know, that the condition should be, there's a, there's a budget, it's approved, and there's actionable items on it, and there's a way to validate those items with research and metrics, to basically quantify that they're doing what is this board and the Rowan County residents want needed to do.
Well, I guess my concern is, how did we arrive at $80,000 if we don't have a budget? I mean, just, you just pull that number out of the air? I mean?
I understand. It's, it's, it's a number based on a tentative plan, you know, that we roughed out, we roughed out, and because I was asked by the group to put some rough numbers together, and I did. And I would be glad to share with these at a later date, be more than happy to. But it was a rough plan that we put together, because we've, you know, there is a lot of things in the upfront that has to be done immediately to drive this, but then it will, then it will actually tailor off, but it will be maintained. This isn't, okay? And I'm going to say it to this board, and I'll say it to everybody in this audience. This is not a, you know, just a short little, you know, this has to continue, okay? This has to continue, continue. So, you know, you know, I applaud, you know, the county being able to be the forthcoming and say they're possibly considering the funding of this. But this can't stop in June this year. It can't stop in December this year. It can't stop December in 2020, 2021. It has to keep going, because the internet and what people have, the immediacy, there's nothing like this ever, okay? I mean, we hear all the things going on now with, you know, with the impact of, you know, with, you know, the things going on, whether you, you know, with the, with Trump and, you know, manipulation and all that. There's nothing that impacts people more and is immediate as what social media and digital. And it's only going to, ask Mikey, it's only going to get faster. And things are changing, okay? This ain't, you know, Facebook and Instagram and Twitter aren't going to be here forever. There's going to be something else in another three years. I mean, we'll have to get on to that, too, to keep driving. We've got to bring people here. We've got to, we've got to bring the Mikeys, the Joices. I'm a native here. I grew up here. I know how great this county is and everything in it. But we have to convince others to move here, to live here, to buy here, to do everything here. So as you saw in your financial statement, that sales tax goes up, and it helps pay for things.
So as I understand it, basically, we need to be marketing our county like McDonald's markets, burgers.
Absolutely. We got the best burger around. You want to come here and you want to eat 100 of them when you get here. Plain and simple.
My other question is for our chairman. Yes, chairman. This money is coming from our economic development fund. So who controls that money right now?
Well, it's, 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 it's part of the economic development funds that are coming in from the legislature, and that is earmarked for education and economic development. We've chosen to split that. So education gets half, and then we retain half of it for economic development purposes.
Okay.
So that, that would be, that would be part of that.
Okay. But normally, we work through our EDC when it comes to economic development, correct?
Well, that, you know, that's a really good question, because James is here. There's, the fact is, there is some marketing going on for Rowan County. James is doing a great job. James, would you like to holler out the percentage increase of tourism over 2016?
17, 16?
Yep, 16.
That's about 15%.
Well, that's, didn't I, didn't I read 31% increase in?
Over the last 10 years, it's up 42%.
42%. So James, James is doing a great job of marketing, getting folks to come here from other communities, take part in the recreational activities that we have and entertainment, but then they leave and go home. The EDC is doing marketing to other communities, to businesses across the country and even around the world. The fact is, we don't have anyone that is marketing this community about what a good place it is to live, shop, and eat and retire. And so that's what that is certainly about. So, you know, James had, I was talking to James about this earlier, and James had a good illustration for it. It's, it was your highway illustration, James. I'm trying to figure out how you, you put it. But if you've got a three-lane highway, and you've got, the EDC is running along the left-hand lane, and the Tourism Authority is running along the right-hand lane, there's a center lane that no one's operating right now. And that's the lane that we're trying to operate in, which is living, shopping, recreating. I wrote down some, the quality of life, affordable housing, agriculture and agritourism, the arts. We have 10 unique municipalities that all are great places to live. And so we're just, we're not operating in that center lane. So this is a continuance of trying to market the whole picture.
Where was the, I guess there's a board being created? Is that, can you bring that slide up for me?
Can you, can you go, you know, go back to be the EDC slide?
So is this, this advisory board will be under, so we'll give the funds to EDC, and then this board will make a decision of which way, where the funds will be spent or how they'll be spent? Is that the way it'll work?
Right.
So when will we find out who was on this, this board?
We can have that for the next meeting. We, we had, you know, a lot of folks were contacted and asked to be part of this. And so the Growing Rowan Group had come up with this list of representatives and put names to it. So they were in the process of contacting each of the names that had come out of that group. And so folks are giving their consent to that right now. So, you know, they can, and, go ahead. Well, and I believe, again, with the branding thing, this is kind of the way that worked. We came forward with a initial kind of rollout, what we wanted to do. And then they came back to us with, with the advisory board, and we voted, voted on that group.
So we're not giving this money to some group of citizens that we don't know who they are. We're giving it to EDC, and then EDC will distribute the funds at the recommendation of this group.
Right. Yeah, we had a choice of, let me, let me be real blunt here. We don't want the county in charge of marketing.
No.
Okay? The fewer things that we can have local government doing, probably, this is just not in their purview. So, you know, no disrespect to anyone that works for the county, but this is really a private sector talent that there is out there for marketing. And so we wanted to create private sector folks that could come together and talk about how to market this community. And so one way we could have done it is just said, hey, these folks came up with a recommendation in Rowan County, you ought to hire a marketing person that is in-house to do all of these things. We didn't want to do that. We wanted private sector marketing to occur. So one thing we could have done was gone back to the Tourism Authority. They're very familiar with this. They did a great job at the branding piece. But they were not available right now to do that, because their plate is very full. And so we looked at the next logical group, which was the EDC, because this is part of economic development. They discussed it with their board. They felt this was part of what they do. And so their board unanimously agreed to take this task on. So, so yes, we would be providing funding to the EDC, and the EDC would be the fiscal agent of that and oversee, then this board, and Growing Rowan Marketing Group would be involved in that as well.
Mr. Chairman, with that being said, being I was on the TDA when we did the branding, James Meacham provided a very strategic budget, as well as a takedown schedule on when that budget would be taken down in increments, based on what was going on as far as the actual hiring of Steve Chandler, then the rollout, then the website, and then all the other marketing that we wanted to do. And if we're going to be using taxpayer dollars to fund this, I just think we need that for the citizens to feel good about us spending their money.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. There's, there's a couple of steps that we need to complete. And we'll be, be happy to have not all of them come back and speak next time. But we can have, Paula could come back, and Mike could come back and talk about a couple of things. One would be, at that point, we would have all of these spaces filled. We probably have, half of those are identified already and have spoken to those folks. And then also, we could ask Mike and Paula for And then also, we could ask Mike and Paula for a detailed spending map about where we would go with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Is that acceptable?
I have a motion to make. I would motion that we would table the current motion that's on the floor until next meeting, and we receive the information about the budget and the request for 80,000, how it's gonna get spent.
All right.
Before we vote on that, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that's been involved in this, on this, what we assume is gonna be a new advisory board. The talent and the drive of the folks that we've seen tonight is what we've been talking about is one of our greatest assets in Rowan County, is the individuals that live here now, and how important it is that we show the world what kind of individuals we have, what kind of school system we have, what kind of opportunities are here in Rowan County. And thank you to each of you that served on this board. This is what we're talking about. This is what we've been talking about for over a year. And we certainly appreciate you being here tonight and bringing this to us.
All right, Jay, how do we, how do we move ahead? We've got a motion and a second on the table, and so.
Table, table a motion? Yeah, we need a second for the table a motion.
Yeah, so you'll need to modify the, you'll, you'll need to make a motion to modify, to modify, say you'd like to modify the motion that we.
Mr. Chairman, I think you were the one that made the motion.
I understand that.
Okay.
All right, well, then I'll modify my motion. Okay, I'll modify my motion that we have these folks come back. We table this to the next meeting, and so I'll make that in the form of a motion. Do we have a second for that? One second.
I would, I would ask for these people's convenience. Would it be better, since that's an afternoon meeting, is that gonna facilitate these people's time better if we wait till the following evening?
You're not here? Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, I appreciate everyone's here, but I, you know, I think we're gonna support this. I don't think everyone needs to.
Yeah, no, Paul is out of town. Let's go ahead, and we'll put it on the next meeting agenda. And Paul and Mike and the, the group can work through who else can be here, maybe Michelle. Okay? All right.
The only question I have is, is there anything time-sensitive between now and the next?
No.
It's not?
No. All right, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for coming and for being, working on stuff for the county. We appreciate it.
Yep.
Is Randy Kress here?
No, I don't see him.
There he is, he's in the back.
Oh, he's like everybody else, hangs out in the back room.
So for, for those of you sticking with us, the commissioners receive emails. We receive emails quite often from folks that live out in the county that say, you know, I don't have any internet service. I got one recently from a guy that came back from college and says, he said, I wanna start a business where I live, but I don't have internet service, so I've gotta move. And that's, that creates a financial hardship for him. So in speaking with, with County Manager Aaron Church, Aaron asked our Information Technology Director, Randy Kress, if he would study this issue and come to us with, with some information. So he's worked really hard on this and been impressed, so thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, what I'd like to provide is basically an exploratory view of how Rowan County interacts with the rural broadband. Take a look at a few different items, discuss the broadband importance, just so we understand where we're starting, and then what some options for the county, the Board of Commissioners can look at to consider. So in some of this research, just looking at broadband as a general topic, clearly broadband internet access is vital for businesses, citizens. We use it governmental, of course. So key points there, we definitely have increased use of broadband as it relates to our school system with the one-to-one initiative, and the need for all students to basically have access to some form of broadband to complete their work. It's, you know, important from an educational standpoint. And to this point, also, if you balance broadband from your rural perspective with private sector, you can basically close the digital divide between what you see in urban and what you have in rural for broadband, you know, expansion in different areas to include rural. So the information I provided here, and you'll see as noted on many of the slides, the reference point of where that came from. So a lot of this is just basically compiling information for the board to consider. So this slide, while busy, basically paints a picture of internet as used by individuals. What you'll find with different tiers of broadband, if you're doing this from a consumer perspective, is you always have different speeds that you want to achieve. Looking at different uses, this comes from the FCC, from a federal level, just basically describing what different speeds of broadband are in terms of megabits per second or a number. So your basic users, when looking at this from what's available, a rural user that has just light use or basic speed internet available to them can only do so many functions within their household, you know, whether that's get online, check email, to, you know, possibly stream a video. But there may be contention if they have more than one member in the household. So this is important to, to take note of as you're looking at the different broadband offerings that are available to our citizens. What we'll find when we look at maps in the future is, you know, there's definitely different tiers that everyone has. So what we see here is the different uses that you may have in a household that citizens would look at when they're going to, you know, consume a service. Now, if they're trying to consume a service, and there's only one tier available because of their distance away from, you know, what the providers will do, they're limited. So this, this would affect your digital lifestyle, if you will. So in case, put it in perspective, my, our family, there's three of us. My wife is watching a movie on Netflix. I'm doing work, connected to the county. And my daughter's doing educational with her studies. So we have three people, we need to have higher-speed internet. So if I was in a, what you'll see is an underserved or unserved area, that would be difficult. So that's what I'm trying to portray here. So we'll look at county coverage map overview of, as it relates to the services that are available for Rowan County residents. We'll look at the federal and state resources, and then finally, how the county can become involved and what levels. So while this is a busy map, it looks a lot like a Verizon map or a Sprint map if you're looking for coverage. This is what's available when you're looking online to see how is coverage for broadband, specifically in this case, to Rowan County. So we have the county outline, the notes, as you see, it's almost camouflage. What matters is the areas in pink in your north and northwestern parts of the county. These are underserved and unserved areas. And you also have down near the High Rock, we have High Rock Lake, and it runs down. You also have the, the tip at the bottom. And these are considered, while you see the map, and it shows low-range speeds between 1 and 24 megabit, these are typically unserved. So while they can get broadband service, it's typically satellite. And this is based off of data from June 2016. So that's the reason I handed you printouts, just in case that's not quite.
And that's low speed.
That's low speed, yes. And so these are the areas here that are represented there. Now, what you'll see, and this is what some of the area, and we'll look at that in a survey, is some of these other areas that show different speeds that are higher. Again, this is just like a typical cellular coverage map, but for broadband, you may not always receive what's advertised. This is just the report. So if we look at that, and I showed you those pink areas or the unserved area, that represents about 6% of our rural population. And the 6% of our rural population would be about 3,200 that are currently classified in unserved areas that aren't able to get a form of broadband even at, you know, just above the base level.
That's households, all right.
That is population, that's not households, yes. So this is based off of a population count from a census. If you look at this compared nationally, Rowan is doing better, considering the nationwide is 28%. But you have to look at that as a whole, about the rural population. So.
But that includes Montana.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, but that includes Montana.
You'll see that in North Carolina as well. So in 2016, we had worked with the State Broadband Office, and I'll talk about them in a little bit, about how do we start with this process if we're looking at how to expand broadband through private sector to our citizens? So we had a survey. I did put at the bottom that we only had 204 respondents. That's great, we did get respondents, and we did have an article in The Post. We had posted on our website, and we also had this at the library. But what we're showing here is those respondents that had indicated that their, their service was either inadequate or didn't respond. So as you can see, it does correlate, to a certain degree, to those areas that we said were underserved. So if we have the upper northwest portion, we didn't have many respondents in the southern, southeast area. But we do clearly see that, you know, in addition to the areas that were unserved, those are, what those citizens that are responding and saying that, no, they don't have adequate service. And of course, you see that throughout as well, because there's just gonna be different service offerings. Again, low number of respondents, but clearly, if you can't see it, there are green dots for those that do have adequate service, so it's not clearly a negative result. Yes, yes, sir.
So in these responses, could they, could the response be, they do have a high-speed internet, but they're not happy with their service? Would that also, would that be, was that, could the question, question be manipulated that way? Is what some of these people may have said.
I think on this survey, we were using recommendations from the State Broadband Office to just ask, do you have adequate service? There were other questions asked about what were the rates that you would be willing to pay? So this was just a point-blank, you know, is your service adequate for your needs?
Okay. Because I know there's times when I've, I've had high speed, but I wasn't very happy with it, and I would've said it was inadequate.
Right. Yes, you may have high-speed service but not be happy with it. So this just gives a general flavor, yes. So to the, the note that Commissioner Closeman mentioned about Montana, well, this is North Carolina showing some of our unserved areas throughout the county, or I'm sorry, throughout the state. And as we can tell, if you get into western mountainous areas and eastern, in the floodplains, clearly there's a lot of unserved areas, but Rowan does have its share of unserved areas as well. So that's just to put it in reference of, of what this looks like statewide. And that'll, that'll come into play as we talk about potential funding. So in getting into that, we'll go from top down, looking at federal resources, then state, and then county, to see where potential opportunities are. So one of the major players in this, from the federal agency standpoint, is the FCC. They're the ones that define the terms of what broadband actually is, what the speeds are. They make changes to what those speeds are that ultimately impact funding. Also, in case FCC is just not on the tip of your tongue, they deal with net neutrality issues as well and make decisions on that. So that's their, their terms. One thing that I found in looking at this from a funding perspective is they also have Connect America, and they're in phase two of that, and I'll talk about that here in a second, how that impacts us. From a grant perspective, we do have a grant writer. And we had started looking at this process before with the USDA, because they offer a grant, the Community Connect Grants, and I'll speak to that as well, from a federal level. So FCC has a Connect America Fund. Again, it's in phase two. I stopped at phase two because they've already passed phase one funding, and it's, it's outdated at this point. But the goal of that from a federal level is to expand voice and service areas where they're unavailable. So that means the areas I just mentioned before potentially would be in those. They work with the service providers to allow them to review those areas, and then if they decide to participate, they'll provide funding. If the provider chooses or elects to take funding, they have six years to do a rollout plan. Now, the note I have here, it came from the frequent asked questions, is that not every household has guaranteed access. So when I show a map here in a second, it doesn't mean that every home would be covered. So if we look, this was from their website, showing what areas, as we can see, it's very similar to the unserved areas. Not quite every single, you know, splotch that we saw before, but clearly in the same locations, these are the areas that FCC had designated as potential for carriers to accept funds. Happy to say that that's not a weather system moving in. That's just the next map that basically had the summary of who accepted those. AT&amp;T, as an incumbent carrier, and Windstream, as an incumbent carrier that provides service, did accept funds. There was a note from AT&amp;T on how they were taking, I think nationwide, they received over 10 million. Their methodology is to expand fixed wireless to allow broadband in homes, and that would cover this area in the Cleveland location in this northwest. If you check their website now, they are actually offering fixed, fixed wireless for residents in that location. So just a finding from that, that they did accept funds. Yes, ma'am.
How recent a report is that?
That they're offering the service now? I had just checked their website after seeing this and putting in the zip codes. And there are, those two zip codes for that area, the northwest area, it does say service is available.
Having talked with someone up in that area only about six months ago, they say that they're receiving the service, but it's not working.
I will say this to that point, too. The speeds that they're offering for that AT&amp;T fixed wireless doesn't meet FCC's broadband. There's that, the cost of it, and it is, it's not unlimited. It's, it's actually using cellular technology from that standpoint. So while they've accepted money to expand, it's potentially in a different form than what Windstream may do and expand out their current service. So I appreciate that comment. I was, was curious about that myself. So we have, that's how FCC can interact from a federal level. We also have USDA, and I mentioned the Community Connect Grants. We had looked at this process in 2016, and ultimately, the county would work with a provider to determine an unserved area, establish a plan. And part of that process is you would identify a critical community facility that would receive broadband service for two years as part of that expansion, so that would include that area. As noted here, the grantees must have legal authority to provide, construct, and basically build out the service. And there is a 15% matching for funds. So the, the point of this statement is there has to be prep work in place. You're not just going to apply for USDA grant because it's available. There's gonna have to be work in place. You're gonna have to know your providers, know what your solution is, and be able to write all that up to apply for a grant.
But that prep, you're talking about the private sector is.
Yes, you're, you're the private sector provider.
This isn't the county.
No, and if you look at the, the grantees over the years, those are private sector firms. Now, the county may facilitate with helping identify locations that would be part of that, but they're not applying, the county is not applying for the funds themselves. Correct. So that's what I have on federal funding. Again, this was the initial exploration, there could potentially be more, but I think that's two opportunities that do stand note. From the North Carolina resources, we have the Broadband Infrastructure Office, which, if we look at that several years ago, wouldn't have been able to say anything about it. It was just established in 2015. The state had made a very strong push for expanding out broadband from a state level. Lots of resources, there was a paper produced on it, we have an office created from this. And again, as I mentioned, we worked with the Broadband Office in 2016. Again, they were getting their feet underneath them, trying to figure out what to do. And I think they've come a long way since then. We'll talk about that in a second. We do have a regional support contact, Glenn Knox, who has been in contact with me, and he knows about tonight's meeting, and we'll talk about that a little bit, just to understand what their resources are. Another note, similar to USDA, there are potential grant opportunities for counties. In last year's budget, there were over 15 counties that had worked with the Broadband Office and had come up with close to 20 million dollars. There was a proposal in the 2017 budget, which also goes into 2018. I did put a note that did not pass. But those counties did have to do work to understand where their unserved areas were. Again, you're not just gonna ask for it, you have to plan for it. But that's always a potential that could turn around any year, and there could be funding for broadband expansion. So how does the county get involved? What is our involvement from a government, local government level? One, engaging State Broadband Office is clearly a way, I'll talk about that in a second. One of the findings I had was looking at what Alexander County had gone through, which is they had performed a broadband feasibility study, so I'll mention that. A note that came out of the feasibility study, and just wanted to make this note, is North Carolina law precludes Rowan County from owning, operating, or investing in broadband. Carolina law precludes Rowan County from owning, operating, or investing in broadband service to the public. So with...
Would you read that again?
Sure, I'll read it slower as well. "North Carolina law precludes Rowan County from owning, operating, or investing in broadband service to the public." So I think the intent is clear there. You...
Precludes, that means that we're not going to get into the broadband business, is that right?
Unless you're in violation of the law, correct, yes. So, and we'll also review some options for the board commissioners. So broadband office, again, like I stated, they started in 2015, they're definitely, after talking with them and talking with a few other counties, they are engaging the broadband office, and that would be one of the options I'll propose, is they're working with models, they've worked with different counties, whether that be far west, far east, that are clearly underserved. They're fine just regional, so they would work with us as well. They did recommend a framework for starting a broadband program, and this is a low-cost option, is basically create a broadband committee or task force, define goals, and establish key members, this would be done by the board. From that point, and what they've done in other counties, is they issue a request for information. This is basically to ask your incumbent carriers and potential new businesses that may be interested in providing service, what do they need from the county? What are your vertical assets and horizontal assets, which basically means what fiber do you have in the ground, or resources, and what vertical, you know, do you have water towers, radio towers, things like that? They'll work with, you know, creating a meeting and having that with your providers to get everybody at the table as well. So I think they've come a long way from what they can offer and how they can provide assistance, and they have a good model. So other county pursuits, just to mention this, after talking with the IT Director at Alexander County, they did perform a broadband feasibility study, and they, it was well-received. Basically, this was to get a formal, professional overview of the county-state, who the carriers were, what resources were available to plot this on GIS, to really have something to hand your carriers, so that they can work with understanding all the resources. They did do this in parallel with having a broadband committee, so this was an independent process. Just in knowing that there are definitely vendors that are capable of providing this, it was well-received in Alexander County, they received over 11 responses, which is great, I mean, we see some IT responses with two or three. And, but the prices varied as well, so there was definitely a wide range of services. They did actually have that completed, I put a link to that at the bottom, and I think it was emailed out earlier as well. So that was the results from that. Again, the results from a Rowan County perspective would be specific to Rowan County assets and carriers. So I present to you some potential action items, if you'd like. You can create a broadband task force, as noted by an option from the State Broadband Office. From that, ultimately, it would define membership, that would include key stakeholders that would be able to promote the community involvement. So again, we had 200 respondents in the first survey. If the task force determines that there needs to be more input from that, would definitely be good to have, I mean, the marketing guys that were just here would probably be ideal for getting that out. So, but define goals and a charge. I do have some of the items here, you know, that could be used, basically promoting broadband services county-wide, addressing the needs of unserved and underserved residents, fostering public progress innovation, enhance existing capabilities, because you do have existing carriers that may just want to improve speed in certain areas, and good governance from us to look at it from that perspective. A potential task force makeup, I did get feedback from the Broadband Office of some recommendations. They did say, keep it fairly small, you don't want a huge group. This, you know, initially would be comprised of technical, political management, and citizenship as well. And speaking with both Polk County and Alexander, it did work out well to have a wide variety. The school system, I did list them, would be very good to have someone onboard there, because they would understand the student needs and the different areas that they're trying to cover. So with this, I have county commissioner leadership, county IT from a technical advisory standpoint, a county public safety official, as this gets into expansion, they would have contacts with potential community locations, whether that's fire stations, EMS stations, Rowan Salisbury schools. Have rural leadership as a recommendation, just so we can understand the rural population and know what their needs are. And then, of course, citizen involvement from those unserved areas, if there was interest. So that's the option for your task force. Another option would be, and of course, this wouldn't incur, it wouldn't incur costs for an RFP, but if you were to issue an award, an RFP for pursuit, would be a broadband feasibility study. This would be basically composed of several items that would be placed into RFP, these would be conducting the needs assessment, performing the GIS work, and basically providing that document. It's more than that, and it's not just a document, there's meetings that would be accompanied, working with providers. So again, but that does come with a cost. And talking with the broadband office, and actually, after I had looked a little bit further, I would say this would be something that might be a conclusion or an option that could come from a task force, or there may be enough information that comes from a task force that this would not be needed. So with that, I gave you printed copies as well, in case you would reference back, but those are a couple of options for you, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
So the point of this is to acknowledge the fact that we have both unserved and underserved areas in our community. We have areas that, while they may show up as having access, some of it is light, limited access, some is moderate, and some is high, but this would be for us to really drive a stake in the ground and say, this is something that we're going to focus on from a market perspective. So again, this is, this is not the county getting involved in broadband, this is the county looking to see what areas and what citizens have no access and light access or not adequate access, and then bringing the private sector to the table, kind of using our influence.
That's correct, and in speaking with Polk and Alexander, there's different results, but they have found that bringing people to the table, setting it as an initiative, does promote either expansion from current carriers, or maybe an explanation to the citizens why, you know, incumbent carriers may just not be interested. I mean, there is a cost per mile for expansion, it may not be feasible for them, but this kind of helps drive that. Any answer?
So, it's my understanding that ATT received one of these pretty big grants?
For Rowan County, for this particular area, they received 74,000, but in whole, they received it as a nationwide.
74,000?
That was the particular area, if you break it down into the census blocks. But now, they're receiving more than that holistically, that's just if, specifically for Rowan County areas, that was the amount of money that the FCC granted them. Now, if you look at it, I think statewide, North Carolina State, the summary for AT&amp;T was 3.5 million. So if they look at that as investment in capital infrastructure, how can they utilize that to expand coverage as much as possible?
And again, that was really cellular service. Out where I live, for a while, we had a lack of a good cellular signal, so we had a mini tower that we put in the window of our house and received a cellphone signal, but it's really kind of the same, they're receiving a cellular signal from satellite, and that's what's being used for internet, and that's just not very fast.
That satisfies your basic use for one-to-one?
Yeah.
Yes.
So from an action item standpoint, and Aaron and I had met with Randy several times on this, this isn't just for information, we're coming to the board for some action, and we think the reasonable action would be, it's the, well, the last page says questions, the next page from the back says county option broadband feasibility study, and then the one before that is task force membership. So we would like to pursue this further on behalf of county residents, and ask to appoint a task force based on the makeup of what you see before you. And again, we would come back to the county with specific names of folks who would be on here, some of them, you could guess who they'd be. I believe, in fact, you found out from the State Board that they recommend the IT Director be the chairman of this endeavor, so congratulations.
Pass that along, yes, I cannot...
Yeah, congratulations, that's one bit of information you shouldn't have given up.
Well, I will say that in some cases, it was the county manager, but I'm not going to throw Aaron under the bus.
Yeah.
That's fine.
We'd rather, I think we'd rather put that on you and your capable hands and mind. So it could be that this group is able to, under the leadership of Randy, to come back with enough information that then we can go to AT&amp;T and Windstream and those folks to talk about a better solution, or that group may come back to us and say, you know what, we're going to recommend a feasibility study be done that is more detailed, that we could take then to the private sector. But once again, this is not the county. As I read recently, well, I'm not even going to say, because it's just too ridiculous to repeat, but this is just the county really acting as a, not even, yeah, facilitator of getting the private sector to come and...
It's basically a subset of the State Broadband Office, we're fulfilling our role from a county to engage the local carriers.
Right. And by the way, I'll go ahead and say it, vibrant cannot be one of those, right? Because vibrant is not allowed to expand to residential outside of the boundaries of the city. So this is about getting those other carriers to come in and try to fill a need, right? So how many people go on your committee, Randy?
Have you established one yet? I would say, what it looks like is about five to seven. If you do open it up and you make this with citizen involvement, we'll have to see what the engagement is there as well. And that's the reason I looked at, you know, from a five to seven perspective. It would be nice to see, you know, engagement from those that would be in the western part that aren't receiving service to understand, and also that southeastern part as well, from the High Rock community. I think that would be great. So I'm looking at about seven. We would work with the broadband office from that standpoint and engage with them. Again, there may be surveys, we would utilize this group to help promote getting that survey out, if there needs to be more detail. That would also facilitate having a provider meeting, and ultimately, some of the feedback that comes from this could be used to generate items that could be used for grant purposes as well, so.
I don't, I was looking at this list here, if you want citizens, there's not a whole lot of slots for them unless you'd go with seven.
Usually, one or two citizen that would represent those areas, that would be available.
You're trying to get, weren't you trying to get one from kind of the eastern area and also the west or the southern area?
Yeah, and speaking with Polk, you know, they had indicated how some of their makeup had performed different functions, and they had gone through, and one of the residents had helped facilitate some drive-throughs, looking at different tower sites and collecting information. So it definitely helps to have those that know the area and understand what services are available as well. Of course, the makeup could be anything that you'd like it to be, but this is just a recommendation.
So if we had one from the west, a citizen from the west and a citizen from the southeast, then we'd have a seven-member committee?
If I did my math right, thank you.
All right.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Randy? I know the time you've put into this, we've met with you several times, and really appreciate it. Very impressed with your work, appreciate it. All right, so commissioners, I'll make a motion that we create this broadband task force to basically study this issue and have Randy come back to us. Doesn't need to be the next meeting, but if we, again, you look at, you look at the description of the folks on here, we know who some of those are going to be. So whether it's next meeting or the meeting after, could you come back to us with the names, and we'll vote to appoint those, assuming we approve this task force?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Randy. All right, a lot done tonight, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Oh, we've got closed session, yeah, we've got a closed session coming. So move the board now into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 3181183, to receive attorney-client privilege communication. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And as soon as we clear the room, we'll get started. All right, we're back at a closed session, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.